Well, thank you all for being here. We appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come for this budget presentation. I'm gonna start off and then turn it over to Dr. Richard Brown as we, if I go forward, not back, in advance. So, the goals of our budget process are to align the budget to realize our aspirations as an institution, to implement our strategic plan. Now, the budget is a tool that allows us to accomplish what we need to accomplish. We've tried to have an open process which, so that people have a understanding. We'll improve on this in the coming year. This has been a work in process, and I think we're getting to a very good place. The, some of the challenges and opportunities that we're facing, certainly with tuition being controlled by THEC, in addition to the UT Board of Trustees and the UT system weighing in on our tuition, we have the Tennessee Higher Education Commission also weighing in. Their max tuition increase for this coming year is 2.5 percent, and you'll see that's what we're hoping to have for the coming year. We also have a different environment in the state of Tennessee with the locally governed institutions operating, what is the role of THEC, what is the role of these local boards, and a system that has an interim president. So, there's been a number of things for us all to be working on during this year. I think the connection with our affordability and accessibility for students, trying to keep down costs as much as we can, and yet have the resources that we need to offer an outstanding educational experience, we're trying to balance that. And certainly affordability and access are part of who we are, but we also want to ensure that we can offer an outstanding education. We wanna make sure we have enough money for scholarships to be able to support our students. Yeah, there are a number of opportunities that we have also. I think philanthropy is certainly one of those. How do we augment our budget with revenue from philanthropy that can help be that margin of excellence for us? If enrollment growth is substantial this coming year, that will have a positive impact on our budget. And our strategic plan is what it all comes back to, which is, how do we have this transformative impact on our students? How do we prepare them to be good citizens of our society, have them leave our campus with a grounding in a subject matter and a major, but also ready to take on the world and understanding how to communicate and work with other people? And that certainly includes a broad commitment to diversity and inclusion. So, at this stage, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Richard Brown to work through the details on the budget. Dr. Brown?
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for being here today, and let me start with some preliminaries by saying that town hall meetings are interactive meetings. This is a process for you. If you have questions, do ask those questions of us relative to the numbers we present, the information that we give you today. So, you will see dispersed throughout the room, microphones, and if you have a question about something, raise your hand. I'll acknowledge it, and someone will get you a mic so you can ask that question. I also want you to know too, that everything we present today will be posted on our website so you don't have to take copious notes if you don't want to. We're gonna present all of this and post it all on our website today, as well as this is being recorded and live streamed also, so I wanna thank you for that. Let's talk a little bit about the budget timeline here we are today. We're here at April 29th. This is the chancellor's town hall meeting to share our budget process to date. On May the 12th, we will present this budget to the UT system. The president will be in contact with the chancellor and the CFO of the system. Our executive leadership team will present our entire operating budget to the UT system. We'll move into May the 14th where this budget is presented to the UTC Advisory Board, our local advisory board, who will make some budget recommendations to the UT Board on behalf of the chancellor here about the budget. And then finally, June the 21st, 2019, when the UT Board of Trustees meets in Knoxville, they will approve all budgets for all University of Tennessee campuses. Any questions about the timeline? Let me do some thank yous up front. I wanna pause and thank some people here today, in particular, Tyler Forrest and Chris Sherberson and Allison. Is she here? There she is. Would you guys stand? This is a key budget staff and planning staff. Let's give them a round of applause. Allison Evans. I'd be remiss if I didn't say this doesn't happen without their input, their strong work. We're in the fourth quarter of this year's budget, and I want to encourage all of you to make sure that you keep your current budgets balanced. If you give me negative numbers on this year's budget, it will affect what I present here today. So, I want to encourage you, you have two months left. If you have issues, make sure you contact the budget office. We'd like to end the year in the black, close in the fiscal black, with no major budget surprises, if at all possible. I do also wanna pause and thank Provost George Hind, who co-chaired this Budget and Planning Committee with me. This is Provost Hind's last budget for UTC. If you will stand and let us give you a round of applause. Just wanna thank you for your leadership and all that you have done for us. Let's move forward now and take a look at proposed revenue. I always like to say there are very limited ways that you can get revenue into a university budget. Generally, it comes by tuition and fees, state appropriations, auxiliary enterprises, grants and contracts, and really enrollment growth. It's a big deal in terms of how we get new revenue into the budget. So, I wanna talk a little bit about the proposed 2020 budget. You're gonna see a total recommendation of 203 million, $891,000 into this budget coming forward. The majority of this funding, the revenue, will come from tuition and fees. Fifty-eight percent of the revenue that we spend, $118.4 million, will come from tuition and fee support. State appropriations will come in just short of 60 million, $59,311,000 at 29 percent. Now, we've been moaning a lot about state appropriations, and we certainly would like more of that, but when we look around the South, especially the SREB, you're gonna find that Tennessee is doing a lot better than a lot of our southern partners in terms of state appropriation support. So, yes, we will continue to whine a little and ask for more, but we are very, very pleased that the governor fully funded the funding formula, as did Governor Haslam for the past three administrations. Bearing in mind that the revenues from state appropriation for higher education, every dollar they give is a discretionary dollar. There's no statutory authority out there that says they must fund higher education. So, it's a real value proposition for us, which means they think pretty highly of public higher education in this state. So, I'm very, very pleased with $59 million. Auxiliary enterprises are very healthy. We'll talk a little bit more about that. We'll bring in another $20.6 million, or 10 percent of this budget, and then rounding out with sales and services, grants and contracts, and other sources. When we look at the proposed expense, how will we spend these funds? What has been recommended by your budget committee, by the chancellor, the leadership team, how will we spend this $203.8 million? Well, of course, the academic enterprise should be central to the budget here. At the end of the day, it is about instruction. That's what we do every day here as a university. It's about the quality of instruction and teaching and research and service. So, instruction will drive a bulk of this appropriation at 39 percent on instruction. Another 8 percent you will see in academic support at 17.5 million. Student support services, we round out 13 percent of this recommended expense budget at 27.4 million. I always tell Yancey Freeman, "Dr. Freeman, don't start salivating. You've got athletics in that number too, and that taxonomy there. So, that's not all your money, Yancey." All right? And Mark Warden, I thought I saw Mark come in. Okay, Mark, you still have a budget, all right? So, I'm part of that 27 million. Institutional support comes in at 8 percent. Seventeen million dollars will be spent there. Scholarships, in order to remain competitive in scholarships, 13.8 million, or 7 percent of this budget. Other small expenditures at about 3.8 million, and auxiliary again enterprises at about 10 percent. Now, these amounts, again, may change slightly based on some year-end entries and based on some enrollment numbers, but this is the projection. Again, research, 3.5, and public service, another 2.7. When you aggregate it up though, over 50 percent of this budget will be focused on the learning and teaching and research mission of the university. And that's pretty powerful. That is very competitive for any state public university budget. We're pleased to do that. When we look at, another way of looking at this budget, the chancellor always indicates, "We accomplish the work of this university through talented faculty and staff. We are about people. You're the ones that get the work done here at the university." And appropriately, you will see that 47 percent of our budget, $94.6 million, will be spent with salaries here at the university. Another 35 million, or 17 percent, would related benefit calls. So, we are a human capital-driven institution. It is about people and quality people. Operating budgets will come in at about 34 percent, almost $70 million on the operating side. The operating budgets over the last five years continue to improve. You have asked for more direct investment in operating dollars. We've accommodated some of that. We have restricted revenues that also come into the university, grants and contracts, actual state appropriations, special state appropriations come into this budget, as well has scholarship dollars that comes in from the state, the Hope Scholarship, and all of those kinds of funding sources. Grants and contracts, we bring in about 84 percent of this $52 million at $44 million. We're very, very pleased that we are ramping up our grants and contracts and our research profile here at the university. This number continues to grow, and we're very appreciative of faculty and staff that continue to bring these dollars in. Other sources, again, about 14 percent, $7,392,000, and state appropriation at $792,000. Much of that's our diversity funding, those specialized dollars that the state sends our way. Let's look how we expensed that $52 million out. How do we spend that money in this year's budget going forward? Well, you guessed it, 79 percent, almost 80 percent of that, $41.3 million, will be invested in scholarships here at the university. Yancey smiles when I say that. Much of that coming in to ensure our competitiveness, that we can continue to attract the best and the brightest students across the state of Tennessee, really across the country when we look at it. Research, another $3 million, 6 percent will be spent there. Academic support, 4 percent, $2.1 million. Instruction, even with this budget, will drive about $3.5 million, or 7 percent of this restricted budget. So, let's talk about proposed new revenue. Where will the new dollars come from? How much new money can we get to the table? That's always an issue when we begin to plan a budget. By the way, we started this back in September. The chancellor wanted us to begin this process earlier, and we've been at this for quite a long time now. So, here's the revenue sources. We project, and we're asking for a 2.5 percent increase in tuition and fees. We're requesting no out-of-state tuition increase. In fact, you're gonna see us ask for a reduction in out-of-state tuition, trying to make the campus a little bit more competitive. We think this 2.5 percent is reasonable. It is what THEC is recommending for public four-year universities, and I want you to bear in mind that last year, this campus got zero in terms of tuition, zero. So, we really do need this 2.5 percent to make our budget work this year. Every dollar of that, we will see expensed back out. We have a little bit of money in reallocation of PMBA funds. Dean Dooley is there at the end of the day where we discontinue the program, but we expensed those funds back out. I'm excited about 15 and 4, the new tuition model that we will start in fall of 2019 of this year. It will generate some $2.2 million in revenue. I will say to you upfront that over a million dollars of that will be spent for faculty positions to deal with roadblock courses, courses that students need to ensure they can progress in four years. We've got a full explanation of 15 and 4, but we'll have $2.2 million, you'll see us, expensed out there. Differential tuition, a small increase in nursing generates about $353,000. The nursing program had the lowest number in terms of tuition coming from these kinds of fees. They looked at their model to see what would make them more competitive across the state, and they think this is a reasonable increase for them. In fact, it will make them more competitive. State appropriations, CCTA, outcome productivity growth, again, the governor fully funded the funding formula. It works because it generates $2,867,000 in new dollars for this campus. So, all of you who are helping students graduate and progress on time, this works in the funding formula. You'll see a $400,000 deduct in that, and let me tell you what that's all about. Anytime you take a major building offline, the Lupton Library is getting ready to be renovated. I pleaded with them not to deduct it. I told them I was cutting the grass, and I had electricity over there. They didn't buy it. They will not give you operating support when a building is taken offline. That's much of that deduction you will see there. We will also pick up a small amount of money, $467,000, I'll talk about this a little more, with the athletic and technology fee increases, just a small bit, and some seat fees. Enrollment growth, from fall 2018 to spring 2019, we add some enrollment growth, and FTE, we will pick up conservatively, $500,000 that we will flow into this budget. So, enrollment growth works. We can grow enrollment. It actually works towards the bottom line. Then you're gonna see us put about $3.6 million of non-recurring revenue into this budget in terms of what we're seeing in reserves. So, you'll see $12 million, $51,000 of proposed revenue. We'll take a look now at fee changes, some of the changes that you will see in our fee structure here as we move forward. You'll see generally a 2 percent increase in housing, in residential housing across the board, north and the south campus housing, generates about $371,000. They will be spending those funds on upgrades within those housing facilities. May plans at 2.5 percent generates about $27,000. This is an increase that is by contract, that we're required to do under the current contract. The athletic fee you will see will go up about $34. Right now, it's at $480. The proposed new fee is $514. It generates about $343,000. The AD has made a great business case for these funds to help with athletic travel and operating. He's also talking about helping the university band with those funds. We're gonna have some continuing conversations about that. I'm excited really about that. The technology fee, it currently sits at $250. We're recommending just a $10 increase in that. That's an inflationary increase. I see Dean Littka out there now to help with that, to deal with all the servers and software increases that is required, generates about $123,000. Nursing differential is currently at $57. It will go to $100, a change of $43, or 75 percent, generates about $250,000. But you're dealing with an academic department that is really intensive, right, in equipment and research, really intensive. We think this will help offset some of that. And they've been operating, they've been badly making it with this. Knoxville is still much higher than that. This puts them in line with other nursing programs throughout the state of Tennessee. Of course, we have a small amount of lab and course fees that generate about $17,000. A little bit, 2.5 percent increase in parking decals, generates about $23,500 for maintenance of the parking lots. And physicians, a seat fee, a new one, at $500, generates about $1,500. Any question about these proposed changes in the fees? Everybody's real quiet. I told Chris that for those who did not sit on the front row, you missed the handoff of new $100 bills. Too late, all right? He's already put the money up. I saw him when he put it back. Let's take a look at mandatory fee comparisons. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I just wanted to get you an aggregate of what, because the state always looks at this, really, and when you look at total cost of attendance, what are those mandatory fees? What are all our students paying for? Again, our total is $1,776. We're recommending only about $44 increase to $1,820 to that, 2.5 percent, not very high at all. And we expensed that back out a little bit in athletics again, and on the technology side of the house, just for transparency's sake. Taking a look at new revenue, how that revenue comes in, at the end of the day, you see tuition will drive, again, almost $2.3 million of that. 15 and 4 comes in at about $2.2 million. State appropriations, again, very, very high for us, in excess of almost, little better than $2.5 million. Differential fees, enrollment growth, and again, you're gonna see this column of reserves. You're gonna see us recommend almost $3.8 million of reserve funding. This is one-time funding that we will spend on special projects in this budget going forward. When you look at the expenses associated with that, the proposed new expenditure items, just take a different look at this graphically here, you can see that academic affairs will be the largest recipients of investment here in this budget, in this 20 budget going forward. At the end of the day, close to $4 million of this $6 million that we will put out there for investment, you will see. Also, recurring budgets will have about $8.3 million, non-recurring, again, $3.6 million of revenue that we will expense out. We'll take a closer look at this. Institutional, you will see that as well. You're gonna see also an institutional, we are recommending a 2 percent pay raise for all employees here. Talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. Any question about these funds here, the way we're expensing them out? Okay, everybody stay with me there. Well, every time you get into this process, I've been doing this for several years, Tyler and I often say, "Gosh, we wish we could fund everything." Because of all the proposals we heard presented to us over the last four months, we wish we had recurring revenue to fulfill every request. The deans of the colleges did a remarkable job in terms of setting priorities, asking for things that they need in a longitudinal way, not a one year, but in a three-year planning cycle. So, we wish we had $13.5 million of recurring revenue. We would have funded it all. We did not. So, we've been in the process over the last two and a half months of asking all major divisions to sharpen their pencils, go back and make some strategic cuts, and come back to the Budget and Planning Committee with a budget that we can really fund. So, I want you to see the original requests at $13.5 million. We had reductions in this middle column of $7.3 million. This is a lot of work. It represents a lot of work across the colleges, across the major administrative divisions, and our current request that we're funding going forward, $6,193,000, which is still a good amount of investment here. Any question about that? Okay, everybody's still awake. Wave your hand, let me see. All right, everybody's alive. Let's talk about the highlights. I wanna deep dive a little bit into these budget allocations in terms of what we're actually funding, so you'll get an idea of what's being funded. The chancellor proposed zero. He asked for absolutely no increase. I tried to push that off on everyone else, they didn't buy it, so you won't see that out of the other divisions, but we appreciate the chancellor for his leadership and all, but he didn't, he asked for no increases at all going forward in '20. Here's the big one, academic affairs, new budget allocations, recurring revenues, $2,157,000, $15 and $4, $1,448,000, non-recurring revenues of $322,000 for total investment in academic affairs projected in '20, $3,929,605, a pretty major piece of investment here for the academic side of the house. We're glad to do it. These are the highlights of the things that the provost and the deans are talking about doing with these funds. They're gonna add lectures for additional sections offered, 15 of those, making sure that students can get all the sections they need to graduate in four years. Pretty important on the 15 and 4. You're gonna see new faculty positions funded in recurring dollars, nine new faculty positions across the colleges. Additional academic support for academic advisors, four dispersed throughout the colleges. Increased support for tutoring of students. New programs for data analytics. Mechanotronics and physician assistance programs will also have additional revenue for these new programs. Increased instructional support for summer school. We find that summer school is important, has a completion operation. Students who cannot get their courses in the spring and the fall, perhaps it is that summer school section, but will keep them on track towards graduation. So, we're taking a closer look at summer school funding. Faculty startup funding was very, very critical. Faculty said that they needed startup funding when they're recruiting new faculty to stay competitive in the marketplace. So, the provost has recommended some startup funding. And of course, the library computer refresh program, y'all give Dean Littka a round of applause. She started that back in the fall. She stayed on it even up until the last day that we had these budget deliberations. You made it, right? But when she makes it, the entire campus makes it. This is important because that is for the entire campus, and we appreciate that. Let's look at research and graduate studies, the new budget allocations there, recurring revenues of $94,727, no 15 and 4 funding for the graduate school and research, non-recurring $86,777, for a total of $181,504. Dr. Remarney is gonna spend these funds. She's partially funding a deputy vice chancellor position in her area, and to fully fund the director of the Center for Urban Informatics and Progress position. So, a very small amount of investment, but key investment for that particular area. Proposed budget for West Trinity Administration and Finance, recurring revenues of $311,000, no 15 and 4 funding, non-recurring funding of $288,000, for a total of $599,341. This division recommends spending this money in emergency services, adding two additional campus police officers to the campus. This recommendation came forward across the institution, even from the faculty senate, Budget and Economic Status Committee, trying to get them up to nine additional officers so they'll have enough staff to cover an urban campus this size. Emergency services, fire panel system, Robertson, I thought I saw him over there, is upgrading all the fire alarm systems in all the campus buildings, right? Many of them are old and antiquated. This is a three-year rolling project. Human Resources gets a talent management position to help with things like recruitment and training and career development. Human Resources also is getting a compensation and a leave specialist, as we look at compensation planning across the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga. The Bursar picks up a senior accounting clerk and budget and financial analyst position, gets in the budget office. Facilities get some funding for grounds and maintenance and contractual services. Tom Ellis will be using some of these funds to improve the looks of the grounds over the summer if we can take down some of the fences, and he has promised me, right, Tom? That he raised his hand. At least he had courage, that some of the fences will be coming down around June. So, we're really excited about these kinds of investments on the admin and finance side of the house. Enrollment Management, Yancey Freeman, Dr. Freeman there for enrollment management services, new budget allocations for recurring, $211,766. He picks up $344,000 of $15 and $4. for a total investment of five hundred and fifty-five thousand nine seventy-four. The highlights from his division, he hopes to invest these funds in the advising center, picking up another advisor in the advising center. In enrollment, uh, enrollment growth, five peer advisors and five academic advisors. In student success, he's looking at the summer bridge program, tutoring and a senior or level leader there. In admissions, he's looking for a director of admissions, uh, for the campus. Financial aid, he's looking for a, as some financial, uh, campus logic software. And in international education, we're putting in a program called International SOS. It's a software support package. When you travel internationally, we actually know where you are and if something happens to you, we can get services to you. It's a pretty strong program. This is a program that's, uh, being utilized all over the country. We thought it was time for UTC to grow up a little bit and make sure that we're protecting our faculty and staff, uh, who, and students who travel internationally, because the world is a different place now. Uh, Strategic Enrollment Technology and Support Specialist there, and that rounds out Nancy. Any, any comments about this? Dr. Freeman, you wanna give any of it back? Alright, okay. Student Affairs, as you know, Dr. Freeman has student affairs and enrollment management. So for new allocations in student affairs, recurring fifty-nine thousand two twenty, fifteen and four recurring dollars of twenty-five thousand, total investment of about eighty-four thousand two twenty. Highlights here Disability Resource Center for transition programs. Disability Resource Center for a part-time academic coach there. And of course, in student outreach support and assistant director in that particular program. Solid investments on the side of student affairs. Any questions? Alright. Communications and Marketing, and I, I thought I saw George Harrison. He may have, uh, had to run out. He said he had a meeting. Uh, but again, new budget allocations for communications and marketing, recurring forty-three thousand dollars, uh, total of forty-three and five dollars. Highlights, fully fund the current staff writer, of which we all use, and a web programmer position. If you've noticed the, the website at the university, it improves every day. I'm excited about going to the website now. You can navigate it now. It's easily, uh, clicked on. So George is doing a really good job in this area here in his staff. Information Technology, uh, proposed, uh, budget allocations there, recurring two hundred and seventy-five thousand seven thirty, non-recurring three hundred and sixty thousand for a total investment of six hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Highlights from this and Dean Licker, uh, move forward several of these, uh, recommendations. A Network Systems Engineer position. I'm told we are one deep in that position. So if that person gets hit by a bus, we're in trouble. So we're trying to fix that. Uh, a banner system analyst position, data center storage and backup, client services, learning, uh, space refresh and a data center infrastructure refresh. All of that has to be upgraded, uh, to make sure, uh, IT is very viable. Any questions about IT? Great. Institutional budget is a big one here. Let's talk a little bit about this. This is a budget for across the institution. Recurring two million one hundred and twenty-three thousand six fifty-one, fifteen and four dollars, uh, a little bit of a negative there. Uh, non-recurring dollars, I mean, uh, two point one million for a total investment of four point one million dollars. The biggest piece of this budget is the two percent compensation pool. We are fully funding the recommendation for a two percent salary increase for all employees on our campus. You can clap for that, because that's a big one. How we will use those funds, we are recommended that they be used for market adjustments or what we call a CPI adjustment. We don't use the term across the board anymore, uh, at the end of the day, but they are market-driven adjustments where every faculty and staff member will receive that two percent, uh, competitive raise. This came as a recommendation also from the Budget and Economic Status Committee of the institution. We do not have our final directives though on how we'll use it. I have made that recommendation to the system, how this campus would like to invest those funds. Faculty Promotion and Royalty, UC Foundation Royalty and Senior Lecturers, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item to ensure that every faculty member here at UTC who receives a promotion from assistant to associate to full professor gets a ten percent increase in base salary. That is still a line item in the budget. Staff and Market Equity Promotions, for the second year, we will have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item for staff to ensure working through HR that your positions remain market competitive. More P and O staff and compensation are looking at that now. We're looking at things like compression and actually cooperated to say, here's what you should be paid for that position. Okay? Utilities and additional square footage, we've got some non-recurring revenue in there for Tom Ellis as he opens up new facilities to make sure that our utilities, you gotta keep the lights on, folks, at the end of the day. Uh, UT System Charge and UT Research Foundation Charge, every year we pay for whatever increase the UT System recommends. And again, information technology costs still, I mean contractual services. We still are in a contractual period, uh, with, with our IT information system. So we've got some non-recurring revenue there to take care of that until we can complete that project. Any questions? Yes?
Mr. Senior Lecturers, the second floor, highlights?
Yes.
Is that maybe residual from an older slide or don't think we're just going with senior lectures?
I'm gonna ask the provost, because I know he's been looking at.
We're still looking at that. Uh, we kinda need to kinda figure out where we're gonna go. Uh, recently we got input from the Council of Academic Department Heads, um, and, uh, hopefully I'm gonna get something out this week on the guidance of UTE regarding your lectures generally contracts and, uh, whether or not, um, multi-year contracts can be, um, and, uh, here.
Dean, we left it there because every time we met, that, that stayed with us. Okay? Scholarships, uh, proposed budget for scholarships here recurring, five hundred and seventy-three thousand nine, uh, fifteen and four, four hundred and forty thousand dollars, non-recurring, four hundred thousand. Major investment in scholarships, folks. This is how you stay competitive in terms of recruiting the best and the brightest students. One point four million, the highlights from this investment, I hear Nancy letting out a big sighs and way to go at the end of the day, because this is what gives them a competitive edge in recruiting. Scholarship investment from enrollment growth, scholarship investment in first-time transfer and need-based students, grant aid, support, institutional scholarships, a broad category of institutional scholarships, institutional graduate assistantships, uh, for the graduate program, institutional fee waivers and reallocation of current funds. Now, the institutional fee waivers, I, I wanna talk to you a little bit about that because every year those things go up. I call it the unfunded mandate of the state. It's when the state comes in and says, oh, we're gonna give a discount to one-legged green-eyed frogs. And they don't fund it. And you think there's no one-legged green-eyed frogs. Well, a hundred of them show up. And we, and we have to make that, make that available to them. So we, we, we continually ask the state to fund those things. Have we been successful, Tyler? Not, not at all. So we always have to recover and make sure we can adjust our budget to cover those issues. Let's talk a little bit about our market position. Where are we as an institution in terms of tuition and fees? This indicates our competitiveness as a university. Right now, currently, again, our mandatory fees are one million seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, uh, uh, and, uh, uh, undergraduate maintenance, I'm, I'm sorry, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six. Man, I tell you, I, I, thanks for, somebody should have raised their hand on that one. Undergraduate maintenance fee is six thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight for a total undergraduate resident tuition of eight thousand six sixty-four. Very competitive in the state. You'll see right now that UT Martin is really, ah, more than we are. And some of that has a result of us not having a tuition and fee increase last year. We don't mind being low, but we don't wanna be too low. We need enough revenue to make sure we can stay competitive as well. And again, looking at undergraduate tuition and fees, I wanted to kinda give you a different vision of that to show you since 2016, we have had very little increase in undergraduate tuition and fees on this campus. Now, look at the yellow bar. You will see a drastic change in the number. Twenty-four thousand, uh, nine ninety-four proposed in twenty. That's why we're moving forward and asking the board to reduce undergraduate tuition by fifty percent. You just cannot stay competitive with undergraduate tuition for out-of-state students that high. Does that make sense? How many of y'all agree with that? See the hands? Good. Those in the back, you are not alive. There you go. I got one hand back there. Thank you. Graduate tuition, again, uh, when you take a look at that, uh, proposed for 2020, ten thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. We've already reduced graduate out-of-state tuition down to eighteen thousand three twenty-six. We're out recruiting now, trying to make sure the graduate enrollment will hold. I'm asking every dean and every college to help us with that. Please, it has a real impact on the budget. And again, there's a great slide here that, that demonstrates to me a couple of things. Number one, this is why UT Chattanooga has led the state under Complete College Tennessee Act. Take a look from 2010 all the way up to 2018, from one thousand seven ninety-seven degrees awarded to two thousand five eighty-five. Every public university in the state wants to know what's in UTC's secret sauce. How do you do that? When you look at the bottom of the scale though, you can see a, a, a corollary there. As revenues go up, investment in these programs and scholarships and advising, you're able to make some of those investments to keep your competitive edge. And I'm hoping that will continue to go up, right Nancy? I was hoping, I, I was hoping, man. Let's look at compensation investment. All of you who are here, to let you know, we are very, very sensitive. We're very deliberate about paying attention, focused attention to compensation here on the campus. Uh, at the end of the day, you'll see since 2013 to 2020, we've had a total investment of sixteen million one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in compensation. Cost of living adjustments come in at about almost sixty percent of that. These are kind of across-the-board, uh, adjustments. Uh, at nine million, we've had faculty promotion and rollovers at about one point eight million or twelve percent. And of course, market and merit adjustments every year throughout the colleges, throughout the administrative divisions at about four point six million dollars or, or twenty-nine percent. And again, we're adding two percent this year along with those dedicated pools of market, uh, funds to ensure salaries stay competitive. Is it enough? It's never enough. But we've gotta stay vigilant and make sure that we stay competitive. E and G Fund Balance is an indicator of financial health for the campus. I call it your rainy day fund. If you had a fund at home and you, and you're doing your own personalized budgeting, this is your emergency fund, right? How many of you have emergency fund? All your hands ought to go up. If not, I'm gonna do a class on personal finance. Talk about emergency fund. This is our emergency fund. I always tell Tyler, when I first started in this role, it was a little short of about six hundred thousand dollars. I did not want this job. We were not healthy at all. As you can see, over the years, we paid deliberate attention to it, seven million dollars in that emergency fund. I'm very proud of that. This represents about four point one percent of unallocated expenditures. These are for emergencies. If the governor says, hey, look, there's gotta be an empowerment of two million dollars. Well, we've got some revenue to deal with that. Does that make sense? T-HEC requires a certain level of that. Auxiliary Fund Balances, what are they doing for the bottom line? Tyler Forrest is a great guy who leads these operations. He and Michelle Prince and, and others lead those kinds of programs. Everything from bookstore to Aramark to parking services, all of that. You can see a healthy fund balance of about eight hundred thousand. These programs are, are contributing back to the bottom line. And we also infuse this revenue back into the non-recurring budgets, right? They don't make a lot of money, but they're not costing the institution money. That's the key. And of course, when we look, another indicator of financial health, bonds and notes payable, are we leveraged as an institution? Is there enough recurring revenue to pay for all the bonded projects we have here at UTC? The answer affirmatively is yes. We've been really good stewards there. You're gonna see another twenty-eight million added to this for the new student housing, but there is a revenue stream for every capital project we have funded on this campus. Not many institutions can say that. So we're financially in really good shape there. And of course, this is one where Tom Ellis will begin to grind. If you're close to him over there, you can probably feel his pain, right? From 2014 to 2018, we've gained almost one million of new square, uh, feet of space when we picked up the map building and the state office building. Huge amounts of, of aggregate square footage. We're actually renovating all that property right now, but we're in really, really good shape. We are growing campus. I know a lot of people complaining about all the fences and all of that, but if you live for eighteen months, you're gonna see a very beautiful campus as a result of these investments. And again, another indicator of budget health is occupancy rates in our residence hall. Nancy Freeman ensures me, where's the beer? She, I saw her comment on, there the hand is, that we are a hundred and three percent above occupancy levels. I like that. I'd like it to be a hundred and thirty, right? But we, every residence hall that we have right now is projected to be full, which means that it meets the budget performance, right? And it generates, uh, cash flow. Capital projects, I won't go through the list. This will be posted for you. This is why you see so many fences up. A hundred and fifteen point seven million dollars of active ongoing capital improvement projects on this campus. When you see a campus growing and improvement like this, it is physically healthy. A lot of that has a result of the deans going out and raising funds. I see Dean Dooley there. We've got about a ten million dollar project working up, uh, in his college as well. Any questions about these? And one of the things that, that I'll try to finish with here is I call it our secret sauce has a campus. Not many, and is Brian Rowland here? I thought I saw, there he is, back there, Dr. Rowland. Not many public universities have a UC foundation, much less with an endowment of a hundred and forty-one million dollars, which is a major, major factor in terms of academic excellence for this campus. Take a look at the profile of this foundation as of, uh, February 2019. Uh, forty-eight million in unrestricted support, scholarships, another thirty-one million, forty-four million in academic support, professorships, fifteen million dollars, and faculty development at almost a million dollars, a hundred and forty-four million. They even have ten million dollars of what I call liquidity funding, uh, that they can move in and out, uh, at opportune times. But here's the real slide, what they do back to this campus from their spending plan. Not many public universities can say there's a foundation that, that gives us five million dollars annually of investment. Now granted, one point nine million of that is unrestricted where the chancellor and, and a team from the foundation will sit down and say, what would we like to fund? What new project would we like to stand up here on the campus? Not many chancellors get that opportunity. Scholarships at another million, academic programs, one point three million. Professorships, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of professor, uh, professorships, and even faculty development funds at almost twenty-eight thousand dollars. So let's give the foundation a round of applause. We don't thank them enough. You heard the chancellor say earlier on that philanthropy will be a huge part of, of budgets going forward. We are grateful for what we have stood up in our UC foundation. Folks, I'm done. About three minutes. We'll take questions. Not everyone at once. I'll take way to go too, if that's the case. I will. It's mighty quiet.
Cheers.
There you go. Cheers. And listen, on behalf of Chancellor Engel, our executive leadership team, provost Hines, our, our co-chair, all the deans, uh, great work this year. All of you who are managing stewards of budgets, outstanding work. Do me a favor and let these last two months be in the block two months so we can bring this current year budget in. And we look forward, uh, to the chancellor as he moves this budget forward. I do wanna give a shout out to Chancellor Engel, who has done just a marvelous job of presenting the case for this university. That's what chancellors do, and he's done it very well. He stood up and said we need a two and a half percent tuition increase. I heard him say that the fifteen and four was essential for this campus as he explained it to Lev. I heard him say that the 15 and 4 was essential for this campus as he explained it to legislators and the leaders at the UT system. So we really wanna thank him. Let's give him a round of applause for his good work. Last but not least, stay tuned. We got about a month left. Thank you.